Okay, it's 7:00 PM and the August 12th, 2019, meeting of the Select Board is called to order. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones and if you need to take a call, please take it outside. Before we proceed to anything else, we would like to welcome William Post, our new town manager, and we're delighted to have you here with us. All right, there are no public hearings this evening. We have two sets of minutes to approve. One is July 8th and the other is July 22nd. And to entertain a motion or unpose, if you want to take them separately.
I would move to approve July 8th's minutes as written.
Second. All right, any discussion?
I just wondered, and I don't know if this is a point of order or whatnot, but you know, we had a couple of 3-2 votes in there on people for committees, and I don't know if we want to put in any sort of an explanation why those votes were 3 to 2. I don't know what the correct thing to do is, but...
That's a good point. The couple of people who voted, that was Jeff and Mark. How do you feel about it?
The reasons why we're captured in the livestream, so I'm okay as is.
Likewise.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Anything else in terms of discussion on July 8th minutes? All right, all in favor? No, no, okay, 5-0, no pose. The second set of minutes, July 22nd.
I move we approve Monday, July 22nd, 2019 minutes as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? No one opposed, 5-0. All right, the announcements are in the agenda, and I don't really think that it's necessary to go through and read them. We do have a couple of Select Board meetings coming up that are noted, a workshop, budget workshop that's noted. There's a town office will be closed on Monday, September 2nd in observance of Labor Day. And I think that's it in terms of announcements. Anything anybody wants to add? What are you doing, Mark? Are you motioning to me?
Well, I was trying to get him to stop texting and roll the screen up so people could see it.
Working on issues.
Yeah, he's working on issues, okay. In terms of agenda changes, that's the next item on the agenda, and there are a couple of agenda changes that I'm aware of. Sally Cook and Nick Ruffin had both submitted applications for the Library Building Committee, and we've been advised today that both have withdrawn their applications. They realized that Mark Van Balen, who is with us this evening, I saw him come in a few minutes ago, has submitted an application, and so they defer to hopefully Mark's appointment. The second item is that Doug has requested that we remove from the agenda the approval of the Parks and Beautification bylaws, as those have not apparently been approved by the committee yet. They were draft. Anything else in terms of suggested agenda changes? Okay, then let's proceed. Next item on the agenda is public comment. As a reminder, this would be public comment with respect to items that are not on today's agenda, so if anyone has public comment on a different item, then please step forward. Okay, no public comment on other items, so that takes us to the town manager's report. Mr. Post?
Thank you, and you do in your materials have a written report from me, and this was written a little bit earlier than I probably normally would, a day or so earlier because of the conference I was at last week. Also included is a memo from Finance Director Megan Brackett about the wastewater inspections to note that there are six properties left to be inspected out of the 666 that were originally slated to be inspected. At my direction, two of those will not be inspected for various reasons. One of the properties has been vacant for several years, and another one has, their property owner had passed away, and then the person representative of the property owner had passed away, so there's a little history there, and we don't believe that there's an issue with that property anyway. The other four are either scheduled to be inspected or in the process to be scheduled to be inspected. So that will hopefully wrap the inspection side of it up.
Okay, maybe I had trouble with the math. I sort of thought there were three problem properties left, but there are not, they're...
Correct.
Okay.
The deed descriptions for the West Rockport Fire Station land transfer have been finalized, and now the, or I should say, the descriptions have been finalized, the attorney is drafting the actual deeds to be signed and properly recorded. The Opera House air conditioner, an update, a further update on that, I received a third quote per policy for that replacement, and awarded it to Leighton for the $6,000. The other two quotes were over $7,000 each, so we followed that proper procedure, and that work should be commencing, and I just awarded that today. The traffic light at Home Depot, the temporary truck that was there is no longer there, it's been replaced by a temporary pole. It's expected that the new pole to replace the damaged one by the vehicle accident will take six months to acquire because of an issue with the factory. I won't get into that. In the meantime, the temporary pole will work fine. At last week's Main Town City and County Management Association Conference, my credentials as a certified municipal manager, where I was recertified for a three-year period of time, essentially what that means is that I had to complete 240 hours or more of trainings and activities over the last three years in different categories to keep that certification. Should be noted that I'm one of under 30 certified municipal managers in the state, so it is a pretty good accomplishment. I've always thanked the boards previously, and thanked this one too, in support of the continuing education and trainings that I have to attend. I think it's well worth it for the communities that I've served in, and it will be for this one. Along with that, there is a discount on the town's property and casualty insurance policy. We don't know how much that will be, or whether that'll be in effect for this year, or if it'll be, take effect next year, and we don't know how much that will be, but we'll determine that. Also, last week, we were notified, we had a SHAPE inspection for the remaining facilities, and happy to say that the town is, the entire town is now SHAPE compliant. Obviously, a huge amount of work from the executive assistant, but also all the department heads and staff as well to make this happen.
And the acronym, for those that don't know that, would you give that to us?
Off the top of my head, Mark, I'd love to.
Or Jason.
Safety, Health, and...
I don't remember what it is.
Yeah, no.
But essentially what it is, it's making sure that all the facilities and the building are all safe for the employees to work in. It meets all of the criteria established by the Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Standards, as well as Samosia Standards as well, to ensure that all of the buildings are safe for employees to work in. And again, we're one of very few communities that the entire town has been certified SHAPE compliant. I will look up and remember what the acronym is.
And I think the other one is like 11 or less in the state. It's a very small number.
Very small number, yes.
And that's great, and that also reduces our insurance premium.
Yes, that will also reduce the property and casualty insurance cost to the town as well, so there is some payback for making sure that that happens. The next key there is to make sure that we stay SHAPE compliant and continue that work. Just a comment about the Select Board agenda and bylaws. Anytime you have a fresh set of eyes coming in and looking, the agenda to me for the board, I'm hoping that the board will allow me to possibly create a new draft agenda for you to take a look at, just to see if we can make things more, a little bit more efficient, more effective for the board. If you don't have any objections to that, I'd like to take a stab at that and just, you know, just pass one by you, and I certainly would welcome your comments too, if you have thoughts about creating a more streamlined agenda that's less confusing for the public. I remember the first time that I looked at one of your agendas, I thought, what the heck?
Yeah, so did I, and it's been that way for a long time, right? And it's set forth in the bylaws that are approved every year by the board, but it's not set forth or required in the town charter to be in that format, so Bill and Denise and I were going through our first agenda setting meeting, and we were on agreement that there were improvements that could be made.
So if you have any thoughts or comments, please feel free to drop in or email me with those, and I will kind of throw something together to see what you think.
And so the idea is...
Bylaw amendments that would have to follow that.
Yeah, right, right, right. You would, yeah, give us a draft, and then if we like it and tweak it, then we'll have to tweak the bylaws for the board.
Right. I also have begun reviewing all the town job descriptions for possible updates, which obviously will lead to a salary survey in the future, once we go through the job descriptions and get them to where they actually fit the jobs, or where we want them to fit the jobs. One other thing is the town received a dividend payment from the Main Municipal Association Risk Pool for Good Loss Control in 2018. The amount of the payment was $3,328. I asked Finance Director Megan Brackett, was this a budgeted revenue that we could count on, and she said, we've never received anything like this before, so...
They have in the past, prior to your...
Yes, but again, kudos again to the department heads for keeping loss control numbers down and being, and obviously the safety community with good practices.
Is there a way that we can roll that into the safety program to help fund it in some fashion?
Certainly something that could be considered, you know, for future dividend payments, I think. You know, that could be designated that way. I know in prior communities that I've worked with, we actually created through town meeting a reserve, a safety reserve account, and we put dividends such as this into that, so there is a way to be able to do that.
Good.
So I think that would be beneficial. A couple of things that you don't have in your packet to just update you on. The work on Mount Pleasant Road has, should be completed on Wednesday, and there was approximately 600 feet of road that will be finished, finally rebuilt there. And thanks to a lot of different people, including volunteers, the landscaping work in the front of the town office has been completed and certainly looks 100% better than it did earlier, and we'll keep on top of that.
And thank you to Linda in particular, who headed up that effort.
Yes, absolutely. And I also want to thank Linda for her work as acting town manager for the, between your former manager and my tenure has started. It was nice to be able to see where things, where things were finished up and where things were progressing in other areas, so I appreciate her assistance and also my questions as we move forward here, so.
Yeah, thanks. She did a great job. She did a great job.
The SHAPE Award, that's actually Safety and Health Award for public employees.
Yes, thank you.
So really, it's something that our employees do for us, and it is much appreciated.
That's all for me.
Okay, any questions for Bill? Comments? Okay, we'll move next into the consent agenda. We have a number of items listed on the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or would like to make a comment?
I move we approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second. Any discussion?
Does it make a difference whether it's proposed or presented?
No.
Okay.
All in favor? Okay, 5-0. And thank you Ken McKinley for the donation to the town, very much appreciated, and thank you to Alan Mitchell and James Sadie for, and Richard Remson for your years of service to the town. All right, the next is unfinished business. There is none at this meeting. The next agenda item is new business, committee applications. We have one, two, three, four, five, six applications this evening after the withdrawal of Sally and Nick. The first one is Anna Remson for Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee. She was unable to be here tonight.
Well, along the lines of our last meeting, I would move that we accept Anna Remson's application to be on the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, along the lines of my last issue from last time, we have a policy that says that folks can come meet the Select Board at the time of their application, and I still feel strongly that that is a value-added activity that we should not lose.
Of course, it should be noted that we do have her application and her background, which shows, I think, that she'll be a great asset to the committee. Any other discussion? Okay.
Call the vote?
Yes, call the vote. I'm sorry, we had a first and a second, right? All in favor? That's in favor, okay. All opposed, so we got 5-0, so...
To my Chairman, I think.
Yes.
Is it our intention going forward to have people present and be present at the time?
If they're available and able to do so, it is, unless the board wants to change that practice.
Well, you know, again, we can hash it over. I agree with Jeff in that I think it's valuable to have the person come and say hi, tell us a little bit about themselves. On the other hand, until recently, we've had trouble getting people to sign up for the boards, and I hate to have somebody who's interested and talented keep getting put off because they may have other things that they're doing.
In the spirit of compromise, would it be of value that the next available opportunity at the next Select Board meeting, that the candidates that were approved come by and do introduce themselves to us?
If they can make it.
I'm concerned that if it's not that one, you know, how many, how many do you go where they can't make it? But I'm not saying disqualify people, I'm saying, we, I'm fine with the way that we've got, we have good candidates, we've got good candidates, and we do need folks on our board. I'm with you on that. If they're not able to make it this meeting, if they could, if the request could continue to be there and say, all right, come by on the next meeting, we've got, you know, one to two a month, come by and introduce yourselves to the Select Board and the public, so that we know who they are when we're on these, you know, when the folks are on these committees. That's all.
I mean, you know, Anna makes it to the meetings, which is the thing I care about, to the committee meetings, so...
Well, we can certainly have that as a standing request if committee members who are not able to be present.
And there are certainly people here, you know, who did come tonight to be on a committee. I mean, I get it. The only question is, should it be a foregone requirement, and that I don't feel as strongly about.
Okay, are we all right? Where we are, Jeff? Okay. Moving on, the next, the next application is Mark Van Balen for the Library Building Committee. Mark, would you, oops. Yeah, did you come up here for a minute? Say hi to us from up here?
Where do I go?
Just up here to the podium.
To the podium.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Thank you for submitting an application to the Library Building Committee. Do you have a, you have a particular interest in being on that committee, I understand?
Well, let me say two things. One is, I do not have a very clear idea of what the duties of this office on the committee consist of, but I can go beyond that. I have a deep interest and longstanding involvement with library systems, have decades of experience with very large university library systems, and my focus is on not so much building, the building that we're trying to build out there, but thinking way down the road, what that building, which will be standing in a couple of years, what that will look like in 10 or 20 years. I may say that whatever the cost of the building is today, I expect that the investment in technology over the lifetime of that building will vastly exceed the original construction cost. And so as we build buildings, we have to be looking way down the road to new technologies, some of which we can recognize, some of which we cannot. There are many simple things that we can do during construction with basically no cost at all, if we do them now, that will position us to capture new technologies down the future. So that's my main interest, looking down the road, way beyond the construction of this particular building. That said, as a geologist, I think some of you know that I was very interested in the bedrock underneath the foundation that is now being poured, and when I realized that the bedrock was being exposed, I called Mike Halleck, who's the main state geologist, and two of us went down there and we looked at the rocks underneath the foundation that will be buried basically forever, and we recorded that information for the future. So what I can say is those rocks are going to form a very firm foundation for the new library. We don't have to worry about that. But in a buildup area, such as a village like Rockport, there are very few opportunities to actually look at the rocks underneath, and so we did all that, and we record all that for scientific purposes in the future. Has nothing to do with the library per se, it just has to do with the advancement of science. So anyway, but no, I just am deeply committed to libraries in general, and this library in particular, so that's, anyway, that's what I would like to do, but I have no idea what the job requirements are in detail, and somebody down the road will probably tell me that. But if you want somebody to sit there, like a bump on the log and say, uh-huh, uh-huh, you should get someone else.
I move to approve Mark Van Balen, Library Building Committee, for a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
My second.
And in conversation, did we mention June 30th, 2022 on Anna Remson's?
No.
I don't think we did.
Good point, no. Let's finish this one. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, 5-0.
2022, eh?
Too late now, Mark.
I'm going to write that down, I'm going to hold you to that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, can we go back to Anna Remson?
I would move to approve Anna Remson for the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? 5-0. Okay, the next, the next individual is Ted Skoronsky. Sorry. And I don't know if Ted is here tonight.
Yeah, he's here. I thought he, no.
I didn't see him.
Thought I saw him earlier, thanks.
Okay. And this is for the Planning Board.
Well, it's to move from an alternate to the regular position.
Yes, alternate to the regular, yeah.
As the liaison, you know, Ted certainly attends all the meetings, participates, he's been very active, so I don't see any issues with this. He's familiar with the system.
I move to approve Ted Skoronsky for the Planning Board from an alternate to a regular member for a term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Second.
No, 2020, because he's filling up the time period. Venus gal.
Any discussion? All in favor? 5-0. Okay, the next application is Sue Kauk for Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee. Did I say your name correctly?
Hello, hello. I brought a little something I was going to read, because I don't know, I've never done this before, and I'm really, really nervous, so I thought if I brought something to read to you, it might be better than, and then you can ask any questions you might have of me?
Sure.
And if this sounds...
Don't be nervous. We're all neighbors.
I know, I know, but I'm still nervous, because I've never done anything like this before. So first of all, I'd like to say that even though I've been in Rockport for only four years, I really do care tremendously about this community and its future. And in Rockport, I'm very lucky to overlook two of the parks, Memorial Park and Mary Laia Park, on a daily basis, and I see generations of people enjoying these parks. The children are laughing and playing, young folks are walking hand in hand, older folks resting and reading, folks taking pictures of themselves at the memorial, and sometimes burnishing the name of a loved one as a remembrance. Parks mean different things to different people, but universally, parks are special places that lift the spirit and bring happiness to daily life. I believe parks should be accessible, beautiful, and functional. I believe that public spaces such as parks set the tone of the town and should benefit all of its citizens and be something that the citizens of Rockport can be proud. I'm a very visual person with a design background and a penchant for trees and flowers. I hope to add some of my enthusiasm for these things to the Parks and Beautification Committee, so...
Thank you.
What questions do you have of me?
Any questions?
How do you like 2022?
Has a nice ring to it, I guess.
Is that a motion, Mark?
It was going to be, yes.
And I'll, I can't, I would be bad with the last name.
Oh, okay. You want to go ahead?
I move to approve Sue Kauk for the Rockport Park and Beautification Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
5-0.
Now I've got it straight, though, I'm all right.
Okay. Leigh Ann Dutton. Leigh Ann is, an application for the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee. How come they're all joining your committee, Doug?
Yeah, it's Hunani's committee.
Oh, it's Hunani's committee, that's right, silly me. Who am I saying?
He's been out beating the bushes.
It's because of Hunani, yeah.
Okay, well, I had no idea that I was talking, so I'm not the least bit nervous, but I have, I have lots of years of, you know, personal beautification in my own gardens. I draw the charts and everything, for everything in them. As Denise knows, I was head of town beautification at the Rockport Garden Club for three years, and interested in seeing that the right thing is done in a foresightful manner, and that's about all I have to say. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I move to approve Leigh Ann Dutton for the Rockport Parks and Beautifications Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
All right, I'll make it 2022.
I'll second with that amendment.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, 5-0. All right, the next application is Cheryl Lickte, Dr. Cheryl Lickte, for the Pesticide Advisory Board. And Dr. Lickte was not able to be with us tonight, but has submitted an application, and Doug, do you want to say a few words about her?
Yeah, I think, well, a lot of people probably know Cheryl just through the community, but she's, she practices infectious disease and general internal medicine down at Penn Bay. but she's, she practices infectious disease and general internal medicine down at Penn Bay. Highly respected by her colleagues, very concise clinical thinking. And I think she'll be a good force to have on the pesticide committee. And this all came about because of the brown-tailed moth and what to do about it. So that's why this has sort of come up. But she'll, she'll be an excellent person to have on that committee.
And just for information, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is this pesticide advisory board that we've had, but it's not met or it's kind of been inactive for a number of years.
Probably the last, probably the last time it was actually, did any work was with Steve Beveridge. And they were talking about Park Street and the poison ivy along the sides of the roads. It's been 15 years, probably.
And you're the liaison to that board, right?
That's why I chose it.
It meets once every 15 years.
There you go.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Okay, I move to approve Cheryl Lickte for the pesticide advisory board for a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five zero.
All right, thank you. The next, the next item is the, because we're skipping over the Rockport Parks and Beautification bylaws, as I mentioned earlier. So that takes us to discussion of the memorandum of understanding for Masonic Hall. Bill, do you want to talk?
Sure. So the staff is recommending that the town enter into an MOU with a Masonic Hall so that it can be used as an emergency shelter during times of extended power outages, either for a warming center or a cooling center or a charging center when needed. You have the MOU in front of you, I've reviewed it. Should note that Masonic Hall has installed a generator, and I just got an update today that they ran a test on the generator today, simulated a power outage, and everything worked as it should. There's a small cost to the town on an annual basis just for the generator maintenance, which is under $200 a year. And then if we should use it as a shelter, then there would be a charge based on the daily rate or actual expenses, depending on how long it's used for. And then those costs would most likely be reimbursed by Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Maine Emergency Management Agency, if there was a declaration declared. The town would share a small percentage of those costs if that were to happen. But I think it certainly makes sense. There is no other designated town shelter. The Red Cross has a shelter at the school, but that's a Red Cross shelter, so this would be slightly different than that. The Red Cross would have to open a shelter, whereas we could open the shelter, even if the power was out for, you know, two days or something along those lines versus, you know, having an even more extended power outage situation.
I had a couple of comments about the MOU, but first off, does anyone else have any?
Well, some of Deborah's rubbing off on me. On page two of line number 16, it says designate the Rockport Masonic Center as the town warming cooling center. I wonder if it should say a town warming and cooling center? Because, you know, there may be situations when, you know, we use the town office or public safety building. I don't know.
That's an easy, that's an easy correction to make.
Is it appropriate?
Yeah, I think that's it. I personally think that's a good change.
Well, that's it for me.
The, the one thing that I just had a little concern about, and I know it's just, it's not a substantive concern, but it's just intended for consistency throughout the document. It states on page three in two places that, that the Masonic Center would present...
Do you have line numbers?
I'm sorry, in number nine, the paragraph beginning on line 12. It says, "When presented with operating receipts for the warming cooling center, that we will make, the town will make payment to the Rockport Masonic Center in order to maintain and run the center. Such costs will typically be covered by federal, state, and Knox County emergency funds." So that raises the question to me of, you know, does the town have some liability outside of, you know, if we don't collect any funds for emergency services? And then the same thing comes up again in, down below on line 33, that the, that the Masonic Center is responsible for documenting expenses related to support provided to the town and present any expenses to the town in Rockport for payment. So that raises the question of payment. But then when you skip over to page four, then my fears are somewhat relieved by line two that says, "The Rockport Masonic Center agrees to offer and support as a warming cooling center at no cost to the town." That part I liked. But it's somewhat potentially inconsistent with those two references on the prior page. So we could fix that in a couple of ways. We could say, notwithstanding any other provision in this agreement, that they're doing this at no cost to the town, which would override the two references on the prior page, if Denise agrees with me. Or we could add a little provision that just says consistent with paragraph such and such on page, on the next page. You know, that, in other words, we could reference it on page three in a couple of places or we could make a reference on page four. But in any event, I'm a little uncomfortable with the inconsistency.
Is the intent that the town not be liable for the cost, that it always be covered?
Yeah, and I'm not sure about that. I mean, what's your experience with this, Bill?
And being new, of course, to this, I guess my gut reaction here is that I think that the town personally should reimburse the Masonic Center for the use of it as an emergency shelter. I think we owe it to residents to have a facility available for that type of emergency situation. Generally speaking, the town would get reimbursed for those expenses. However, there may be a chance where it's a short power outage or it doesn't affect areas that are statewide. And if that's the case, then we wouldn't get reimbursed from federal or state agencies for that use. But at the same time, don't we owe it to residents to have a place for them to be able to go should they need to get a hot meal or warm up or cool down?
Yeah, I was curious about the cooling down, because I don't know how that gets triggered.
Yeah, well, if there's a, you know, if we have a heat wave, heat emergency, that type of thing, and the power is out where there's no air conditioning in homes, that type of thing for an extended period of time, then, you know, you have, you have a cooling center.
I'm with you in terms of those lines of thought. The cost per day is outlined here. Some of the items on pages two and three could stay as is. And the town is responsible for the payment of those, whether it's reimbursed by state and federal cost or not.
Right. It's what the town does.
The town does. And so we, we work it that way and make any changes.
Well, I think if that's the sense of the board, then, then I would be okay with the somewhat inconsistent language. Because what I think might happen is on a case-by-case basis, some of these costs would come back to the town. And, you know, based on page three, page four might suggest otherwise, but if, you know, if that's where we are, then...
We should clean up for lines two and three.
In the past, in the past, we have submitted to the EMA office or through the EMA office to be reimbursed.
Yes.
For weather-related incidents that have caused the town undue expenses. That would be my first comment. And my other one is, I just received a message from someone asking, or it's their belief that emergency operations centers can't be used as warming centers.
Cannot be?
Right. So that would hamper your ability to use the town office, if that's what you're planning on doing.
Right, and that is...
Or the fire department, as far as that goes, so...
Yes, and the town office is, is being planned to be used as an EOC.
Right, so we can't...
Which then you could not use it as a shelter or... Yes. And the other point there, too, is that if we were to be reimbursed by state or federal agencies for emergency situations, those payments generally lag way behind. So it is something that we would probably need to put into the budget to, you know, to account for a small amount of money. Or maybe we have areas in the budget that we already could tap that, you know, would pay for something like this, because hopefully you don't have to worry about the situation. But with the way the climate is changing and the different storms that we've been having, it's likely that it may happen. So there would be a liability, you know, to put some, to put some money into the budget to cover potential expenses here, because there will be a lag, depending on the time of year, that an event may happen, particularly if it's in the winter months. The town wouldn't see reimbursement for a year probably or more.
Bill, do we know who drafted this agreement?
I'm not sure. Megan, do you know the Masonic Hall agreement? Was that drafted by the Masonic Hall or was that?
Yes.
Yes.
So I mean, clearly, I read language in here that is consistent with, I mean, with, they probably have a somewhat of a template where they've done this...
I'm sure.
In other locations. And so, I mean, I'm okay with leaving page four the way it is, because that's, it's drafted by them.
Right.
And clearly, clearly, they have agreed to language like that before they drafted it. And then my concerns on page three then are alleviated if we're okay with, with this, with the concept that we do have the responsibility, you know, to, to provide those, that payment to them.
And if we do, if we do create a revenue for the monies we give back for our good work, the employees' good work, safety-related, perhaps that revenue can be a place that any monies might come out of to reimburse them. It's a safety thing for the public. I might be stretching it, but that's...
Yeah, it depends on how it's worded.
Right.
However, a warrant article could be worded, whichever way you'd like.
Looking at lines 15 and 16 on page three. So payment will be either at the standard day use rate or by actual costs. Does that mean it's $150 and that's capped, but if the costs are less than $150? Or is it? I guess I just don't know what the intent is.
Neither do I. Because page four, line seven and eight, says pay use rate will apply initially. The day use rate will be $150. I would, I would offer that we, in the spirit of making sure this is clear for future select boards and future Masonic Hall leaders, if our intent is to pay $150 a day for any day that we use this for this purpose, we ought to have the language cleaned up to say that. And even though the Masonic Center agrees on page four, lines two and three, to offer its support at no cost to the town, except for the town agrees to blah, 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 we ought to, we ought to just clean it up and say, we're going to pay $150 a day if we have to pull the trigger on this.
Yeah, and scratch the actual costs.
And put it to be on the town then to apply for grants and other state or federal aid.
So...
But the Masonic Hall gets paid $150 a day.
And then the actual cost, I'm sorry, the actual cost, to what Doug just said, the actual cost on page three, the line 16, it would use the daily rate or actual costs and the idea would be if, whichever is less. Because if the actual costs are less, then the town shouldn't be paying. You know, it's not a profit-making...
Megan has an answer.
Yeah, Megan has an answer.
Chair?
So when we do the Form 7 and FEMA reimbursement for a declared event, FEMA actually sets the rates. So if we pay more, they're only going to pay a certain amount. So if you're looking to go to a certain amount, my suggestion would be to reference FEMA's reimbursement schedule, and then that's what we would pay.
So all this boils down to is, I think we need to go back and make some amendments.
Yeah, I can do that.
And it seems how we're getting into a little bit of the weed here. Page...
Weeds. Weeds, plural.
Weed, weeds. Page four, nine to 12, apparently we're going to be doing annual maintenance costs.
Yeah.
Even if we don't use it.
Yep, right, for the generator. Twenty twenty-one.
And Bill, would you just, as a nit, would you make note that on page three, line 12, we should take out the word shall, the first word? Because the lead-in says will. So it says will, shall, when presented. So just capital when, when unpresented.
I don't know, I'd make some edits to the document. After consulting with the Masonic Hall.
Sounds great.
Yeah, and I think the sense of the board is, we think this is a good idea. It's what good town government does, you know, provides for disaster assistance. So we're interested in pursuing it and don't want to sound too nitpicky, but just want everybody to be clear.
And we don't want them doing it at no cost to the town.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
We also want to do as we did with other people that had brought memorandums of understanding. We have them run by our people to look at them as well.
Sure.
At least we have in the recent past.
Okay, so that's all the discussion, we can move on. So the next agenda item is approve MAM municipal association voting ballot. So Bill, you want to talk about this?
Yes, so the ballot for the vice president position and three executive committee positions for the MMA ballot, as recommended by their nominating committee, is up for your approval. I do know the, the vice president candidate and two of the three candidates for the executive committee. Just so you're aware of how the process works, anyone can submit a, either a letter of interest or can be petition that can be then serve on the, to be presented to the nominating committee. The nominating committee then does interviews with potential candidates, and then they put forward a slate, which is what you see on, on the ballot in front of you. So the board, the board can approve it as it is, you can approve it voting for one or none or however you'd like to do it.
You know, I had the same problem last year with this bill and people new to the board. You know, I don't know any of these people from Adam, and I'm sure they're all fine people, but they could also be an ax murderer. And, you know, I just have no way of knowing, and I'm not comfortable casting a vote yea or nay for people that I just don't know, just because somebody wants it.
Sure. You do have their biographies, if you will, included with the ballot.
Yeah, yeah.
But you certainly don't know them personally, so I understand that.
What's the significance if we don't?
There really is none. I mean, they're, they're most likely going to be elected anyway.
You know, it's sort of like the three-two vote we have for people that don't come here. I mean, it's nothing personal against these people, I'm sure they're hard-working public servants, but, you know, why am I being asked to vote for them?
The town is asked to vote for the slate because you have a vote as a member of the MAM municipal association, so...
The town of Rockport.
Yes.
Yes.
As well as all the other municipalities that are members of MMA.
I'll tell you what, I'll make it go and we'll see what happens. How's that? I move to approve the MAM municipal voting ballot as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Board one, roll call. Mark Kelly.
Yes.
Jeff Hamilton.
Yes.
Denise.
Yes.
No.
Deborah Hall, yes. Okay. Passes?
The next item on the agenda is update on EMS and possible next steps. Bill?
So I'm quickly getting up to speed on the EMS contract with Northeast Mobile Health Services. And in my prior position, I had worked with them also in that community with a contract for ambulance service. As you probably, as you are aware, Camden held a workshop back on the 30th, I believe, of July to discuss issues with Northeast Mobile Health Services contract performance and just basically to have a good discussion about that. Subsequent to that, Deborah and Denise and I met with Camden officials, including their town manager and their chair and vice chair of their select board, to kind of discuss what we see as next steps. And, you know, please step into, if I mischaracterize the meeting, Deb and Denise. But essentially, we agreed that the next steps for Rockport is that I will review the current contract with Northeast Mobile Health Services and determine if they... the current contract with Northeast Mobile Health Services and determine if they are meeting the performance standards that are in the contract. And if they're not, compile a list of where they're not meeting and then contact, uh, the executives at Northeast and have that dialogue with them. Also determine after discussions with fire chief, um, and other pay, public safety personnel and as well as select board members, what level of service that, um, is, is expected or preferred from any type of EMS rescue or ambulance service for Rockport? Because I think that discussion, I haven't been here obviously for it, um, and I don't know if that discussion is, has happened before in the past. I'm sure it probably has in some form or another, but it's important to understand what service level that you expect, um, you know, for, for any type of ambulance service, whether it's continuing to contract with Northeast or continuing to contract with another entity or some other iteration of that. And once that's determined, that service level's determined, then ask for proposals, whether it's from Northeast and/or, or any other services that may provide that service. Because there is, we obviously are, uh, have a legal and also a moral obligation, as far as I'm concerned, to provide speedy ambulance coverage to the residents of Rockport. And we don't operate in a vacuum in this instance because we obviously have other towns that are involved with a contract. At the same time, the contract that Rockport has is with Northeast Mobile Health Services. So we have to look at that and make sure that we're enforcing those clauses in the contract, so.
So there are two things I would add, um, to Bill's summary. One is that, um, uh, Audra Kaler Bell, the, um, town manager for Camden, has done a lot of meetings in the past, um, on this topic. And we, I think that, um, uh, the chair and vice chair, at least of Camden, as well as I think Denise and I, would like to see Bill Post very much involved in those discussions. And so we would, I mean, obviously all four towns should be involved in the discussions, but at the very least, we would like to see Audra and Bill both be actively coordinating and, um, in the discussions they have with Northeast or discussions they have with others. We'd like to see them both actively involved in that. The second thing is, is that one of the things that, um, has not been taking place under the contract, uh, the contract requires there to be monthly meetings with the fire chiefs. And so, um, it was suggested that we insist that those monthly meetings start to happen pursuant to the contract, and they would be attended by not only the fire chiefs, but by the town managers as their bosses.
That would be something that would pop out, Bill, in your review of the contract?
Yes. Yes, and that, and that is accurate.
Level of service.
Yep.
Using data.
Yes.
Yep.
And, and one of the issues with looking at the, at the data is, is that the response, the response times are, are different to calls based on the, who, who, uh, the, whether it's, whether it's answered by, um, Northeast uses as a private dispatch company, if you will, to report their, um, times when they are responding to a call, whereas the national standard is that they would respond to the regional communication center, which is the center that would request their services. So there's a little bit of an issue there, too. So looking at the data, we have to, um, analyze that. And I know Chief Beasley has, has already started doing that as well, so. But that is one of the topics is, is the monthly meetings. And I, I agree with the chair that the town managers should be involved in those meetings with, um, with the fire chiefs. And I, I do plan on attending with Audra many different meetings. We will be meeting with the Penn Bay CEO, I think it's next week, um, just to talk in general terms about ambulance coverage and that, that type of thing. So we want to look at, look at everything. And Audra and I will be meeting with the administrators of the other communities that are involved with Northeast Mobile Health Services as well, just to have, begin that discussion and hear their input and their needs and their desires. Because every community is different when it comes to what they expect for a level of service as well.
I, and that was one of my concerns earlier, is that we, we sort of were drifting off on our own. And I realize it's just, we can only take care of Rockport, but we are in bed, if you will, with three other communities. And, you know, if we're going to talk about something, I would rather keep them informed rather than all of a sudden someday say, hey, we're going to get into, you know, we're going in a different direction.
Yes.
And they're going to hold their hands up and they're going to go, well.
What about us?
Right.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I, I was going to say, I don't think that we've ever drifted off on our own. Frankly, I don't think we've been very involved in the discussion. That's the pro, you know, that's one of the problems. I think Camden has been, you know, kind of leading the discussions and we've been sort of sitting back, not participating much, so.
I can support Bill's approach to what he intends to do with a contract review and a data analysis, uh, to, and then a sit-down discussion to discuss gaps and close those or establish an action plan to do so.
Yep. Okay, anything else? Move on? Uh, the next item on the agenda is an update on capital improvement projects and a potential bond. Bill?
And I'll probably need some assistance from the finance director or two on this as I'm jumping into this, um, late. But, uh, you do have the memo in front of you that outlines, um, the projects that the Capital Improvement Committee had suggested for a, a bond. And I know, um, obviously the EMS discussion and the potential West Rockport Fire Station, project discussion, um, has to be talked about when we're looking at these items. So there's been discussion from the board about, um, potentially waiting on a bond until, uh, next winter or spring, depending on what the West Rockport Fire Station project looks like, because we have essentially no information about that currently, um, other than, you know, some dartboard estimates for prices. There's also the discussion about the fact that, you know, out of these projects, there's, there's over a million dollars worth of road paving projects there that is recommended. And I understand that the town is behind when it comes to paving, uh, and road maintenance and repair. So it really is up to the board to decide whether you want to put off a bond, um, until we have more information about a potential, uh, new West Rockport, Rockport Fire Station, or whether you want to, um, move forward with this bond here, um, with these suggested projects, and then tackle the West Rockport Fire Station bond at a future date. Keeping in mind that, um, I know that, um, some of the select board members, you, your desire is to have, uh, a vote on a bond at the ballot box versus at an open town meeting, which I understand because you get obviously more input from the public when it comes to that. Whereas an open town meeting can be called fairly quickly to discuss a bond package such as that, not that you want to not have information out to the public, because that's vital when it comes to anything like that. So there are different ways that you can handle it. Is one better than another? I look to the board's guidance when it comes to this because I am new, so it's your community. You know it better than I do at this point. So I think that it would be a, a good point of discussion to have.
Well, I'll, I'll start, just to throw in my twenty percent of the, my twenty percent worth in here. We, we have, in the Capital Improvement Committee pulled together a list of things which we think would form a good bond package and address some much-needed, again, primarily road repair, but some other things are in there as well. That is a bond that could go for review, approval and vote, uh, on a schedule that would allow us to see some work, you know, within the year. If we were to hold off on this work and then put on a new fire station, which could be up to another million, three, a million and a half, then you're talking about in the end approving a bond sometime a couple, a year or two out, uh, to the tune of three million dollars. And it would have a whole long laundry list of things in it. Fire station and pier work and, uh, paving, that type of thing. It may make more sense to have two smaller bonds that are, uh, are, uh, easily described, uh, ready to go. If we present something like this to the voters, uh, it clearly lays out what the money would be used for, how much would go where, uh, to address an issue, and that may be a better approach than to put together a very large bond down the road.
And, and to add another twenty percent to that, um, it wasn't an easy decision. There are a lot of things that are left out on that list, uh, whether it's lime kiln restoration or Walker Park seawall, and there are other things that have been on that list for, for ages. But, uh, we were trying to, uh, focus on infrastructure, and this isn't just, uh, paving of certain roads. There are certain roads that need to be reconstructed. So it's not just paving, and that's why some of the costs are a little extra. Uh, it wasn't easy because as Doug and I had started early on, we were trying to get rid of the old capital improvement list and, and get it out of the way because it has been so long. But, you know, we're looking to do infrastructure stuff versus pretty stuff, I guess.
Well, the part, Walker Park seawall is not just pretty stuff, that's infrastructure.
No, but it, it was on the list that's been there for years. That's a, a fairly large ticket item, as is the lime kiln, um, so.
Right. Uh, I thought that we were told during the budget meeting that DEP or whomever has.
Some complicating factors, yeah, having to do with neighbors and our adjacent erosion.
Where do you stop the wall?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a tough crookie.
And, but also weren't we told that if that seawall gets taken out by a nor'easter or whatever, that they're not going to allow us to build a seawall again and we lose the park?
I don't remember that conversation.
I, I remember Megan or Mike Young telling us that at the budget meeting and Helen Shaw is shaking her, or is nodding in agreement. So that, that has made a indelible mark on my mind, so that's, that concerns me.
I think that there is a point that if we lose enough of the park, DEP is going to say, you're not going to put the material back, or they're not going to give us the permits to extend it. We do have, uh, bigger hurdles to climb with that because you can't just do the portion that we own because we're going to end up with the same problem. So, uh, a butters would have to agree to pay for their costs associated with, with their chunk of the land. So it's not like we can just fix our piece and say, we're done. We're going to end up with the same erosion problem if we don't fix the whole thing.
It was my understanding, though, that we, we had the eight thousand dollars for the engineering. And I think that was either in the process or already has been done. I don't know. It's in the budget.
It's in the budget.
I thought it was.
I don't think we've done it because we haven't got a solid number on.
I think Gartley and Dorsky is working on it, but I haven't seen anything.
We don't have a solid number on how much.
But I, I think to our original challenge here, do you have one?
Yes.
Bond package or two? And do you do one now or do you wait and pile everything? I, I don't want to say pile, but you could quickly have a three million dollar bond package down the road a year. And do we know when we would be ready to execute on a West Rockport Fire Station? Or does it make sense to get this stuff done now and go back again in a year for bond for a fire station? That's, that's what we're trying to talk about.
In terms of the time, right, but the seawall is a concern to me because it's not on your list here from the CIP, so that's why I wanted to mention that.
Well.
The other, but the other thing, I think, to your question is that, um, we are go, we have to give notice to Northeast in January whether or not we are going to be continuing that contract with them. So, um, it's not just a year or two years down the road. I mean, we are going to know by January a lot more than what we know right now in terms of our future on the EMS side of things. So, um, uh, you know, do, I guess I continue to have concerns about going to the voters with a one-point-three million dollar bond in November. And let, let's just say hypothetically that we then have to go back to them for a West Rockport Fire Station, um, which we could do by special meeting in January or February, but is that the position that we want to be in?
We could do it in June.
Or we could do it in June, yes, but yes. But do we, I think we need to keep in mind that this is a possibility and do, and, and not two or three years down the road in my mind. So do we really want to be asking for three million dollars in total? You know, within the space of six months?
I would like to think that with Bill and Audra doing a better job of managing our contract with Northeast and ironing out some of the differences that have been found, that perhaps in January we will have less of a problem looking at it with an authorization for another year. Maybe, maybe not, but I'm, I'm the glass half-full guy.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I, I'm, I'm not going to opine on that, but I'm going to say that I think there's just, you know, there's just as, you, you could flip that and say, we could have a problem come January, so.
Is there any opportunity for public comment, uh, another request has surfaced?
On this topic?
Yeah.
Well, I want the board to finish their discussion.
Just, just to make a point, too, is that, you know, and I've, and I've gone back and forth on, on my opinion on this as well. I think I probably wrote a different opinion than what I may necessarily feel now in my comments, but, um, knowing how far behind the town is in the road projects, if you, if the bond goes to the November vote and gets approved, we can get the financing in place, we can have all of the projects lined up to be able to start in the spring, which is a very beneficial, um, time to be able to do that. You can be, all the bidding and all that sort of stuff can be, can be out and awarded prior to that, so that we can hit the ground running. The fire station issue is more complicated just because we don't, we don't know a lot of information at this point, and we'll know more in January.
Right.
But we're still probably not going to know a huge amount. Something, a building project of that nature, you don't necessarily want to rush that. You want to make sure that it's well thought out, well planned out, that there's a lot of public input on that.
Yep.
And that could go to, you know, a vote in June. It could go to a vote, you know, at a later time. But have a well-thought-out plan in place and have good cost estimates and not something that's.
Right.
That's rushed.
Well, I mean, if you, if you look at Megan's estimate that she gave us on April first, it started in April and it had something every month right through the November election. So January is a little quite close for starting, I mean, to even say, yes, we want to do it, and then try to go forward with bonding.
No, I, I said in January, we have to give notice to Northeast whether or not we're going to continue with them or not, or if we're going to take a different route. I didn't suggest that we had to, I mean, we could have the special meeting anytime or, as Doug said, we could have the meeting and we could have, put this on the ballot if need be in June. My only point is, even if we put it on the ballot in June, what we would, you know, we just have to keep in mind, if we're going to go this route of approving an infrastructure bond, that we could, we could be in a position where we are, to Jeff's point, looking at three, three million dollars worth of bond funding, um, between November and June, a six-month period of time. Is that something that, you know, that we're prepared to do?
Or our role is to put it out there and the voters decide if that's what the voters wish to do.
Right. It's, it's, it's not our money.
Right.
But to weigh in with my twenty percent, I guess, uh, I'm favoring the concept of having two different bond issues and getting this infrastructure bond on the November ballot, moving it forward and then doing whatever we need to do for the fire station, either special meeting or June, uh, June ballot. Along the lines of the seawall, I was disappointed to see there isn't any money in here really for sidewalk repair and reconstruction. I mean, our sidewalks around town are just dismal. Sorry, I don't see that on there.
And it was, yeah, it was on our, our list. It was on our list in, in March. I mean, in March, we had listed out six items. And one of them involved, um, roadwork and two others were the Walker Park seawall. And one of them involved, um, roadwork, and two others were the Walker Park seawall and the sidewalks.
And all the input went into the Capital Improvement Committee, and this has bubbled up.
And, you know, that's what I tell myself, that, you know, the system worked, it went through the committee, so, you know.
My last comment is, I don't want, I would prefer us not to do a, a special election. Uh, we have individually and/or as a group made fun of and criticized other entities that have done this in the past, um.
Yeah, well, we're not making that decision now.
No, I know, but I'm just, it's, I don't wanna, I'd rather not.
Hmm, so we have on here to, uh, Public Works Exhaust System, Public Safety Building Exhaust System, and town, town off, oh, that's the suppression system, we got sixty thousand dollars in, right? And the exhaust systems, they got the suppression system, and then after that it's all, am I reading this right? It's all, um, oh, there's the town pier, but then after that it's all roadwork.
I mean, in, in my opinion, some of the, the, for the exhaust systems, things should go into an individual budget, whether it's a fire station or highway, that should not, in my opinion, be in a bond package. The lower dollar things should be, the vault suppression stuff, we've been talking about that for years. Fifteen thousand, that's another one that should be in, in the, the budget for the department.
Yeah, that's a good question, how does that end up as a capital improvement?
I know.
A, a procedure check, our, our challenge tonight, or what was in front of us tonight was one bond or two, what do we do about West Rockport? I think at some future point, we're going to have a formal bond proposal review to the select board. We've got that on, is that-
Well, you need to tell me what you want in the bond, 'cause I have to work on that.
Right, we have to have that discussion now.
All right, so is that our agenda item?
So what we need-
Um, I, I, I'm sorry.
That's what we need from the board, really, tonight is, is a decision as to whether you want to go for an infrastructure bond for the November ballot, and, and what's, and what's in it, how much money you're looking to, to include.
Because we have to make our, do our approval at the September ninth meeting.
Yes.
Um, so, you know, this is August, um, Helen Shaw, could you come up? I would like to recognize her because she's on the Budget Committee, has been through all this with us.
Sorry, bifocals or a little thing, uh, Helen Shaw, Vice Chair of the Budget Committee. Um, quite by chance, I went through your agenda packet this year, usually I just look at the agenda and don't look at the entire packet. So, when I saw the, um, August fifth memo, uh, to Mr. Post and the Select Board, which was signed by Megan, I was absolutely astonished to see that not a single one of the items that we discussed during the Budget Committee meetings, the budget process in the spring, were on this list. And yet, I don't think I am the only member of the Budget Committee that agreed to the massive, uh, rejections, the withdrawal of certain budget items, simply because I was told they would be bonded this fall. And that includes Mount Pleasant Street, the, uh, Walker Park seawall, the columbarium, the lime kilns, the tennis courts, uh, Rockville Road and Sidewalk, Mechanic Street and Sidewalk, Russell Street at the Curve, and the, um, exhaust system for Public Works. Um, there's two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in the budget for paving, uh, for street work, and another fif- uh, I'm sorry, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars for sidewalk construction. Um, and Megan informed me that the budget that was passed out at the last budget meeting back in March or April, whenever it was, is actually been, uh, changed by what's up on the website. But, um, frankly, personally, I feel betrayed. We were told at the budget meetings that these items would be in a bond this fall, and so we went along with taking those out of the town budget. As to Mark's point, yes, some of these are very, very small, they should have been, and I think in some cases were, in the budget for the twenty, the nineteen, twenty, twenty, uh, budget. Uh, I, I agree, there are many, many streets that do need to be repaved, some that definitely need to be rebuilt, but we have been promising Mount Pleasant Street for years, and the amount on that was, uh, let's see, three hundred and, yeah, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which is certainly something that needs to be bonded. Uh, the Walker Park Street seawall at four hundred thousand, the lime kilns at three twenty-five. And I did, uh, also, some time ago, present to Legacy Rockport, uh, a very possible grant proposal, a granting agency that could fund a significant amount of that, and I believe they have the paperwork on that.
Of the lime kilns?
The lime kilns, yes.
Right.
Uh, to the tune, possibly up to a hundred thousand over a two or three-year period. Um, no guarantee on that, but there is, they have the data in hand. The columbarium in particular, being also a member of the Cemetery Committee, uh, that is something that will eventually earn money for us. We need to move forward on that in a steady manner. Uh, there's currently some money in the reserve account, we were asking for another seventy-five thousand, uh, I guess that's the total, actually, um, for the columbarium, um, if we wanna get any money on that, start bringing in income, it needs to get built. So, um, that's basically my thoughts, um, I don't particularly care when it comes to a vote, but I would like to see some of the items that we agreed on back in the budget, uh, phase, put back in the bond amount, whatever it is, thank you.
Can I ask Linda a question with regards, 'cause we-
Thank you, Ellen.
We talked about this before, there was a reason that the Opera House couldn't be in the bond.
'Cause it has, has to be a taxable bond issue, it can't be a non-taxable bond issue.
And I think, doesn't the columbarium fall into that same, so that's the reason that couldn't go into a bond, Helen? I didn't know.
Yeah, that, that was not brought up recently.
Yeah, well, I didn't know about it until a short time ago, but that's-
I knew about the Opera House, but not about the bond.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very sympathetic to what Helen says here, um, you know, going through the budget process, and again, when I first saw this list, I was sort of taken aback a little bit, why, why aren't all these things we talked about at budget time on the list? But then I'll flip it over and get back to what I said earlier to Jeff, you know, I mean, we turned this process over to the Capital Improvement Committee, and those are also citizens who did a lot of work and made a good faith effort to tell us, you know, what really should be done and what order around town, um, and this is their list.
And I think it's important, too, the minutes don't necessarily reflect how long these capital improvement meetings were. Like, it's certainly not a list that they just said, let's make the majority paving. Mike went through this whole exercise on rating the roads and determining how much it would cost us to fix it, how many of them needed to be repaired, whether the cost of redoing that road or paving that road is something that the budget could absorb at two hundred and eighty-five thousand, I mean, one of these roads alone is two hundred and two thousand, so that would, he'd only do one road that year. And it's important to note, too, that if we were funding paving, like we do computer replacements and stuff like that, we'd have to be budgeting eight hundred thousand dollars a year just to keep up on our roads and not have to rebuild them. So, at two hundred and eighty-five thousand, you're barely making a dent, and then you're pushing off and pushing off, and then it's costing us twice as much to rebuild the road as it would've to just pave it.
And if I recall correctly, some conversations, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but during our time there with the Budget Committee, there was, there was talk about it needing to go up to at least four hundred thousand dollars a year to, to try to maintain instead of fall behind.
The roads.
The roads, sorry.
On, yeah, well, it's even more than that.
Yeah, but that was another day.
But, uh, the items that Helen mentioned were all on the input list. Uh, columbarium, as we said, tax status was an issue, right? The other one was a tax status issue, could not be bonded in these types of bonds. The seawall, there were so many unknowns about the seawall that we said, we don't have enough information to even have a good number and an executable plan on seawall repair. We've got issues with the neighboring property and the impact that, that would have to be worked on at the same time. So, we, we, we went through a process and said, what stays and what goes, and it was pretty elaborate.
There was a definite worry about the seawall, one of them was if we stopped at our property line, 'cause we can't really go beyond it, and what we build creates more of a problem with the neighbors, and then they start losing property, then we're, I mean, so it was a pretty in-depth conversation with a well-versed bunch of, of people, so.
You know, we, lime kilns, what's the best approach for lime kiln? Do you do, uh, friends of the lime kiln thing, or wherever it might be?
No.
As opposed to spending a huge amount of money, uh, taxpayer dollars to rebuild lime kilns?
Yeah, I, I'm personally okay with the lime kiln being a combination of grant and private fundraising, personally, twenty percent.
So, have the, with the, with Walker Park seawall, have the neighbors been consulted? Have they been any part of this, are they, do we know there's an issue?
Not to my knowledge.
That was kinda in our transition period, that, that we really started working through this. So, those conversations, as far as I'm aware, have not happened with the abutter.
Okay.
And it just didn't seem feasible to get through all of that work in time for a bond issue in November.
So, has the engineering not been done?
Right.
No, no.
You know, our, our intent was to get a bond package review and vote in November, and some of those items, we said, there's no way we're gonna get the answers we need between now and then to get you a good number.
Seawall engineering by July, so.
Right, and as far as Mount Pleasant Street goes, uh, the consensus of the committee was, it wasn't highly ranked on Mike when he did his comprehensive review, it wasn't ranked high on that, it served very few residents, there was like five or six items that he had to quantify, and then it produced a total number, and if it didn't fall within the high ranking, then the committee pretty much didn't look at it.
And didn't we just shift funds from the last infrastructure bond over to that? I mean, funds that were supposed to go to West Rockport Fire Station, but because we weren't ready to spend those by the end of July, and we figured out by the first of July that we had to spend the funds, so wasn't it a hundred and forty thousand plus that we just put?
Uh, it was forty-six thousand, forty-one thousand.
I'm sorry, forty-six thousand, yeah, no, not a hundred and forty, yeah, but forty-six thousand-
Right.
That we expected to put toward West Rockport Fire Station.
Right.
So, at least Mount Pleasant got the benefit of that.
Right, but like I said, Mount Pleasant didn't rank high, so the Capital Improvement Committee felt that other roads were needed prior to us doing more work up there.
I mean, a criteria was put against each of these roads, a condition, number of people and services or travels, the length of the repair was a factor, and there were multiple factors that ended up with an index that, uh, forced rank these roads based on need.
You know, we look at, uh, the, another example, though, on the Public Works Exhaust System, I know we talked about that being a safety issue, but then we also talked about the fact that the new vehicles that we're getting now really don't require the exhaust system. I mean, I remember that being a discussion at, at the budget meetings, too, can you fill that in?
We also said there were times where there were people that were in that building twenty-four hours with, uh, uh, activity associated with allowing and truck maintenance and other things, but-
But I thought that the, I thought that they, that Mike had told us that the vehicles that they're getting now don't really require the exhaust system because the vehicles are-
There was a Budget Committee member that brought that up-
Yeah.
That owns a transportation business, and he said, I think it was like two thousand and fifteen, I think, built newer than that, but we still, our fleet is still fairly old considering. So, I mean, it's certainly something to weigh, how long is it gonna take us to cycle out those older vehicles before they're all, uh, better equipped to handle that exhaust, or do you put the system in? And this system is only in a part of the building, 'cause the other part they can close off.
The, the total bond number is sort of a funny number, one million, three hundred and eighty-two, eight sixty-three. Uh, is it possible for us to say, well, let's call it one point five million, which would leave us a hundred and seventeen thousand to perhaps do something sexy like put in some new sidewalks?
Well, so, with the bond issue, you can only allocate bond proceeds to projects listed within the bond issue itself.
Yeah.
So, if the sidewalk wasn't going to benefit one of the roads listed, then you wouldn't be able to do it. Uh, I think it was Jeff had suggested that we round it up and use that money as contingency money, and then if there was money left, we'd apply it to the principal, assuming we could do that.
But if we designated certain sidewalks and included those designation of sidewalks as project items, then we could do what Doug just said. It doesn't have to be associated with the street then.
Right, but you'd have to list it as an approved project.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we could do what you're suggesting, only a hundred and seventeen thousand or whatever the number was worth of identified sidewalks.
And believe me, there are plenty of them.
Yeah.
Or just working general sexiness as a line.
Thank you, Owen.
All right, can we, so we could do that, I mean, give us a nice even number.
I would like to see, I would like to see a significant, um, contribution, if we're gonna go forward this, made to sidewalks, so I would be in favor of taking that approach as suggested by Doug.
Well, and when we have an opportunity to whittle down some of that list, I mean, there's a hundred and ninety thousand of it that ought to be dispersed amongst the individual budgets, in my opinion. Numbers two through number seven ought to be in individual budgets. The paving, that, you know, the three paving items, that should be in whatever he does or chooses that year. It shouldn't be a special, he paves every year, so take, take a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and pave those three things. You know, it shouldn't be bond stuff.
Yeah, good point, Mark.
Uh, the vault thing, I mean, that could be a town office thing, I mean, there's just, there's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of stuff that just should be in some specific line item other than a bond. It's small enough.
As long as there's support there from the board that when the next budget comes in, in front, you know.
How'd that work, Ellen?
This is, this is what the committee gave us, so, I mean, it's just my twenty percent again.
And I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mark, is that those items, you know, in my experience, generally would be budgeted items within individual departments, um, at the same time, you know, there, there needs to be a commitment to making sure these things happen because they do need to happen.
Yep.
So, uh, if I did my math right, the two, three, four, and seven, just for purposes of discussion?
Two through seven, if you're gonna do-
Okay, sorry, I just did two, three, four, and seven, and those come, that comes to a hundred and thirty thousand. But you said two through seven being the exhaust systems.
Yeah. Those are things that-
Exhaust systems fell out this year, you know?
Yeah, I was gonna say, those are things that we were proposed in the budget or discussed to be approved in the budget, and we said, no, we'll bond them.
You know, I like Mark's point about that, you know, the paving, paving is paving, paving ought to come out of the regular paving budget, and, um, and I don't know enough about the suppression system, but I'm just going along with him for the moment on that. I mean, even if we do the exhaust systems, as I said, two, three, four, and seven, uh, give us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars towards something else that we think should be included.
There's nothing magic about the one point three eight two either, I mean, it could be one point five, it could be one point seven. It's what we thought, as a starting point, that something around a million and a half might be a palatable, intolerable infrastructure bond request. And we put together a list of projects that we thought would add the most value against such bond package.
No, I think that they, that the capital improvements, um, that they did a great job on this, and I really, you know, I thank the committee and their hard work on it. We are the board, we are the ones who are elected to make the final decisions, and so I don't have a problem with tweaking that list. I don't feel that we have to just, and I'm not suggesting that you think we should, just, um, necessarily approve it as presented.
No, but I mean, for, for example, if we think another a hundred and fifty thousand dollars ought to be spent on sidewalks, then we have that, that's within our purview to say we wanna add to the bond package for this.
Well, and it's also within our purview that if we think that paving under, uh, Public Safety paving, and town office paving, and harbor paving, if we wanna take those out and say those need to come from a regular Public Works budget- if we want to take those out and say those need to come from a regular public works budget, then we save, you know, then we, we can carve out 130,000 dollars. And we still have the delta between 1.382 and 1.5 for a total of 230, 250,000 dollars if we think there's something more important or pressing.
Our total paving budget's 285,000 dollars for a year, no, how many 60s plus miles of road and
Yeah, we're well aware.
We left the 285,000 toward actual public road work. Much of this paving around public offices and, and things in harbor is tied pretty much with the public, you know, town property that we said we're it's not ever gonna get done in the paving budget. You're gonna, you're gonna put the, the money toward Park Street and other places where you need to have paving done. You're not gonna put it in a harbor parking lot. That's why we thought it would need to be done by bond is because we're never gonna get to it if we don't do it. It's gonna be separate and special way.
One or two bonds. One or two votes, bonds, one or two bonds.
You mean back to the bigger issue?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we ought to decide that.
Yeah, well, I have a sense that we've already decided it. I mean, the majority seems to be in favor of going with two, two bond, or this bond.
Do this bond now.
And then seeing what happens and doing a second bond if need be, depending on the West Rockport Fire Station. That's what I'm hearing. Obviously, we need to have a vote on it, but I'm assuming that we have crossed that bridge. Yeah, and then we'll get into the detail of this, of this proposal. Okay, so somebody wanted to make a motion with respect to whether to proceed with.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with a current infrastructure bond for a November 2019 bond article.
Subject to the details that were.
No, you want subject to, well, no, I, I won't even, I, this is just the one bond versus two. So I'm just gonna say, I propose that we do a singular infrastructure bond for a November 2019 bond article.
Yep, just to clarify that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
That then leaves, that then leaves the fire station for future discussion and development and
Yep.
Activity.
So going back to an infrastructure bond and what we want the infrastructure bond to include because we need to have that all nailed down by our September 9th meeting, let's resume that discussion.
So this is an idea, you do have a budget workshop scheduled for August 26th. If you're not prepared to make a decision for the projects now, you could do that in your meeting after. And we'd still have time to put a bond article together prior to your September 9th meeting.
But if we wanted to designate some sidewalks and the cost of those sidewalks, we need more time probably than that to do that. If we need some numbers for sidewalks, I think we need to.
I don't wanna speak for Mike, but I would imagine that he has some formula that he could figure out how much it would cost us.
Yeah, I would think that the public works director could, could put some numbers together for the next workshop on the 26th.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm basically asking, that we have something for consideration, specifics for consideration. Those places where we need sidewalks along with, repaired sidewalks along with the numbers associated with it for that budget workshop.
And Owen just said the pathways committee has prepared a priority list in terms of how often sidewalks are used, what ones fixing first, so I would imagine that Mike could do something with that.
They actually did quite an entailed
Yeah.
Look at our sidewalks some years ago and I, I know they would be happy if they thought that we were gonna attend to it.
Yeah, we just need specifics on, for the workshop. So is everybody okay with continuing this discussion on the detail then for the workshop, budget workshop?
Yes.
Another idea, you might wanna consider having two, maybe three budget committee members on the capital improvement committee so that they're, so what happened, doesn't, they have an advocate that this got cut out of the budget. We feel yes, no, it should be in there. Something to consider.
Good thought for a future meeting. Okay, it sounds like we will continue this bill at the budget workshop.
Yeah, thank you, Megan.
If we continue it at the budget workshop, we, then we still have to make the decision at a regular board meeting, but we'll be able to do that then on September 9th.
No, you'd have to make your final decision, decision on April, August 26th.
Yeah, so in the workshop, the board can talk about those individual items within the, around the.
Workshops at 5:30?
Yes.
Oh, and then we'll have a board meeting right after.
Right, so do we need to change any announcements or notifications?
I think that's, I think that's already.
Budget meeting is still, is on the calendar.
I don't know, it's though you actually have to vote on the list that's going in the article in an open meeting, because you're gonna have to vote on the article.
Okay.
Right?
Well, in any event.
So you could do that September 9th then.
In any event, we have, that we already have on the announcements, the workshop for the 26th and also a regular select board meeting for the 26th.
Right, okay.
All right, the next item is discuss RES committee composition and request for qualifications. Bill?
Bill Napower, I don't know if you wanna discuss this item, introduce it to the board.
We have a brief overview and Deborah and Doug please weigh in because you participated on the, in the ad hoc committee. Basically, there's two items, put together an ad hoc committee to work, to interview the request for qualifications and then presumably you would select someone and then you would be working with that person for a design. The request for qualifications, I'm not gonna go through every item, but basically what it does, as opposed to request for proposal, is we're looking to interview various developers, architects, firms that have the experience dealing with, I'll see later. Doing designs like this, kind of like a comprehensive design and things like that. And then based on the, the interview, whomever the town is comfortable with, you would select that person and then have to work on a contract with them to actually do the design and to move ahead. It was brought up in, based on a question that, you know, this, if, if a design, if a design came to fruition that the town liked, that the committee liked, what would happen then? Well, basically, you know, that would have to get flushed up into a, a proposal and a dollar amount attached to it and that would have to get approved at a town meeting after the select board, you know, discussed it, like any other large proposal. What the request for qualifications does contain is essential elements in terms of what are the objectives for this project, what basic design elements are important for the project and design principles for the project. But basically, in a nutshell, what it is, is to select someone who has the qualifications, who's done this before, and someone that the town feels comfortable working with. Someone that, you know, you, you have, you can develop a relationship with to forge a, a design together. That in a nutshell, what it is. Doug, Deborah, please.
Yeah, I, yeah, thanks, Bill. I think we actually have it a little bit backwards here for the board. You'll remember that this request for qualifications, this has been a synthesis that Deborah and I and Bill and Hannah have been going back over the past 10 years about what the citizens of Rockport would like to see happen at RES and so along with that synthesis plus the meeting we had back in May with the townspeople, we developed this request for qualifications as Bill described it. On the second to last page of the request for qualifications, there's a paragraph that's labeled evaluation criteria and this says that the proposals will be reviewed and evaluated by the, well, it says RES evaluation committee, but we've decided to change that to redevelopment, so in our motion tonight, we'll have to amend the motion to say RES redevelopment committee. So that's what generated this need to come up with a committee of townspeople to do the evaluation of these RFQs that we get back from people. So I think that might be a little worse since it's the, the RFQ comes first, which then generates the need for this concept of a RES redevelopment committee. And in your packet, you have a suggestion of who might be the appropriate people to have on that, but that's the discussion we're gonna have, you know, have right now, I guess.
Oh, along the same lines, if I might, there was, there was some talk by me and Rick initially about a potential land swap so that we could better utilize the entire property versus a portion of it. And I'm wondering if Bill, you, you said you were gonna have a meeting with a DOT guy and I'm wondering if there's any update or any interest?
Well, I wanna echo what Mark said. I think that's very important, both bills, that we pursue that because I think that could have significant impact on how, how this gets approached and I think it'd be very nice to settle that. For people at home that aren't familiar with what we're talking about, there is an old state DOT maintenance lot located on Route 90, which is between the Marge Jones Fields and the high school. And the concept is, is perhaps we could trade that piece of land for some land that we have over by our public works department and that would give us additional recreational land that would have joined two valuable pieces of property, Marge Jones and the high school. And so that, again, that might make people more comfortable with the idea of going ahead with this development. So that, thank you, Mark, for remembering that.
That was a big sticking point with the property is that it was, it's, it is a nice field, it gets used a lot and in thinking about the, the acreage between Marge Jones and the high school, two also great places for sport activities, it would be an opportunity to, to create something there that would complement what's already in place and also ease the minds of those that would be, you know, lighting the torches to burn us if we ever sold the field. So I think that would be, and Bill, I can give you a little update tomorrow where sometime, you, Bill Napower already knows anyway, but.
Yeah, I can meet with Bill on Wednesday.
It just started early on and there is a, a land swap possibility, so.
I echo Doug's comments on that one, that we should resolve that because it will determine, or could very well impact what happens at RES. Yeah, I'll, I'll meet with Bill Napower on Wednesday. Get up to speed on that.
So I wondered, we've got the, the two motions here where we would approve the creation of the redevelopment committee as sort of outlined and then we would secondly approve the request for, the RFQ and it occurred to me that we might, if we have a new committee we're creating, shouldn't they have some say so in the RFQ?
No.
Okay. I mean, I'm.
That's why I said, I think we have this a little bit backwards. I think it's the RFQ that generates the need for the committee.
I see, I missed that.
And not, not vice versa.
Right. We can take public comments when the board gets done with their discussion here, yes? And then one of the things though, that I wanna point out in the RFQ is we have presented to the board just for informational purposes, general discussion, a couple of, or at least once before, on the suggested, help me out, Doug, the suggested principles, thank you very much.
On page two.
Yeah, principles of development on page two, the top, the top of the, the page. We also discussed these principles of development, had the workshops that broke out into individual groups in May also discuss, give us feedback on those principles of development. So, I mean, these are important principles that I think that the board should make sure that they focus on as part of this RFQ. Because this would be the first time the board was actually approving if they did those principles.
Should, should there be any costs associated, where might that come from?
With doing the RFQ?
Anything between now and next June with this project?
If there, we certainly, we kind of envisioned that the person that we would engage would do this for, you know, without a fee. Knowing that at some point, you know, they're going to, you know, it's gonna start to, you know, cost money and whatever. Someone may propose, you know, and that's, we're gonna be part of the discussion, that they're gonna want some upfront money. We're not, we don't have the capacity to do that. That would have to get approved as part of the budget, as part of the town meeting.
I was gonna say that there's nothing in this year's
No, absolutely not.
To do that, so we might be dead in the water if somebody wants money.
Possibly.
No, it's true, I'm just, but I'm asking.
Typically, you know, they're, we're probably gonna start very slowly and no one is going to be putting together a full-blown design plan until they get approval, so there're gonna be some concept plans, things like that.
If they want money upfront, I'm not particularly interested in having them work with us and go through a process.
And I, as Bill and Hannah have pointed out on several occasions, that this RFQ is really, you know, soliciting beefed up CVs and portfolios, you know, of what they've done before, of what their capabilities are.
Same thing we do with the library, yeah.
This is, this is not some, this is not something where they're, you know, presenting to us
Show us a plan.
Design proposals and plan, no, it's really.
Show us that you have the ability to pull this off in a manner that we find attractive.
And we don't expect to pay somebody for doing that. We're submitting their, you know, their, their expanded CVs and their portfolio of what they've done before.
The good ones already have it.
Yes, right.
All right. I'll.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, why don't we just take a shot at the start of this? I moved that the board approved of creation of the RES redevelopment committee with the recommended composition of members as shown on the attachment. It has, we don't have any.
Why don't we do the, why don't we do the RFQ first? Because again, it's the RFQ that references the RES redevelopment committee and then I think we might wanna have a discussion about.
Yeah, we are gonna have a discussion.
All right, I'll tell you what, I'll withdraw that motion and you go ahead and.
And I moved that the board approved the request for qualifications with the one amendment that evaluation criteria, first sentence should read, proposals will be reviewed and evaluated by the RES redevelopment committee and a recommendation will be made to the select board.
Okay, discussion, is there any more discussion on that motion among the board first? Okay, David?
Okay, David Cockey, I read through this, I've been following this and was at the workshop, I didn't make any of the meetings. Guess you, initially those meetings were kinda just quiet meetings and I saw the latest one from a couple weeks, week or two ago was on the.
Who are on the calendar and the presses.
Yeah, I didn't, hadn't seen them earlier on time. So I had a couple of comments. One was question of upfront money. I understand the concept of let's get somebody and ask them to do something for us for free, but at. But at the same time, I really think that the select board and the town are going to need some advice, either legal advice or other professional advice, if they start to go very far with this. I certainly would not want to hire somebody, you know, go ask somebody, hey, please tell me what you can do for me, you write the contract, you do everything, and then et cetera. So I think, may not be the intent, but I think at some point, there may need to be some advice from some professionals that are familiar with these types of projects.
Absolutely.
Given, you know, what you read in the newspaper periodically about towns getting taken to the cleaners with these. Okay, I'm not going to try to get through this fairly quickly. One comment regarding the Principles of Development. At the workshop, I spoke up and said, first one, instead of should reading the project should make a significant contribution to Rockport's tax base, would be much better worded if it said something along the lines of, "Project must make us provide significant benefit to Rockport residents." Now, that benefit could well be increasing the tax base, tax revenue, it could be something else, it could be a combination of items. I think it's rather restrictive at this time, given everything else is sort of open on this, to have a specific requirement about tax base. There's nothing else that, you know, in the Principles of Development that's specific. So I, and I know that at the workshop, when I proposed that, there was a lot of positive feedback. I also know that that's been in here from the first day, one that these principles are written. So I assume the author of the principles has had a, that's a very important factor for him, but I think it really should get changed.
Did I address that right now?
Yeah.
You know, I hear what you're saying, and I was at the workshop too. I heard what you said. But again, in reviewing the reams of data that we have in the town office, people were very concerned that they wanted the tax base in town supported. Now, you know, you can say, you could change this to say that it's got to benefit the people of Rockport, but that was, you know, that's a given. You know, we know this is supposed to support the people of Rockport. But it was very clear from reviewing previous meetings, and what I heard at the workshop too, that people want this to produce tax revenue for the town.
Okay, well, it's up to the select board. I just would suggest that what I heard at the workshop was there were some people in agreement with select board member Cole's position, there were a number of other people. When I said that, I said, yes, yes, it definitely should be changed. I don't see how changing it from the benefit to general benefits has an ultimate, doesn't preclude saying that benefit is we're going to, town's going to be getting $150,000 in tax, you know, from this every year, but the benefit could be somewhere else. That's just one item. Parcel ownership, paragraph there. "It is the intent of Town of Rockport to transfer all or some of the parcel to the developer upon acceptance of the design proposal." Is that what you guys really want to do? To have somebody give you a design proposal and then sign over and land to them before they've built anything, et cetera? I don't think that's a good idea. I think that whole paragraph should come right out of here and should not be in your request for qualifications. Then there should be some significant discussion, assuming a proposal comes in as it goes forward, about how the whole transfer of ownership, who would wind up ultimately owning the parcel? Could well be that somebody comes in and says, hey, you know, there's a certain type of financing that's available, but the town has to own the parcels, not the same as, but sort of like some of the solar energy stuff. So, you know, what we'd like to do is have a 99-year lease on the property, even if it's, folks come in and say, we want the property, you know, we would ultimately own the property. I think you'd want to have some assurance that they were going to follow through and build the thing, not just propose that there's enough of a history of developers, very well-meaning, very good developers, who've announced projects that don't go anywhere. For instance, I haven't noticed any hotels being built in Rockport recently, right here, you know, near this building. So I think that whole paragraph should just be stricken from this, it really doesn't add anything.
On that, David, I agree with you completely. I'm not quite sure, was this what we intended, Bill?
Yeah, it is, but we discussed this a couple of meetings, and I would say that I don't disagree with anything you've said, David, but the, it's the intent, the intent doesn't mean, you know, anything. It can be our intent today, but we can make our, a decision, or the town residents can make a decision at the ballot box, it's totally something else six months from now. So that doesn't legally mean anything, okay? And then secondly, it's all or some of the parcel. And so what does that mean? You know, an acre out of nine acres.
I didn't think that much what you meant, but I mean, I saw, you know, an article in the Penn Bay Pilot recently, you know, something about towns proposing giving away the property.
Yeah.
Probably just want to get it out of there so you end the discussion for right now.
We relied on, we relied on our planner in putting that in there, and also on some other folks that we met with. So Bill, do you want to just speak to that issue real quick?
I think you're absolutely right. At some point, if you go with a certain developer, the contract you have with them is going to have to spell out all the things you deserve. At this point, we just want them to know, because that's the incentive for them, is that if their design goes through, the intent would be that they would be able to use the parcel to develop.
And we have been told by some real estate experts that it's going to be, it's going to be a real showstopper to be talking about things like 99-year leases. So at the outset, we don't want to have a showstopper, but we're also not committing ourselves.
I'm not advocating anything, I'm just talking about the process. And I just think for the purposes of what you're trying to do and describe as, you know, get these people interested, you know, you might have something in there about, you know, ownership of the property would be decided as part of the process, but get rid of that at the time of the design proposal.
Yeah, let me, let me ask Bill, because to Deborah's point, you know, she says this is all legally murky, but so if it's all legally murky, why do we even have it in there? Couldn't we follow David's suggestion and just say, final ownership will be determined, you know, at a later date or something?
You could do that. One of the things that, you know, the developer is going to look for is that if they're going to come in upfront and, you know, invest design, you know, into this project, assuming that, you know, their design is, you know, would be capable of being accepted, they're going to want to know that this work has a payoff at some point, that they will be able to develop what they do and make a profit doing it. So we're just telling them that, no, our intent is to, if we accept your design, you know, we'll enter a contract with you and you're going to take.
It should all be subject to town vote and all that.
We've left it as a moot point whether or not we're going to charge for the parcel or not, that all has to be agreed to.
For a little more clarification, when you say, we got information, we as a board didn't.
No, no, we, this group.
Right, but I just want to make sure that this is the first time.
Yeah, that's fine. But I, I said, we, we, meaning this ad hoc group that has been meeting, who put this together, has relied on the advice of our planner and some other advice from experts that we had gotten in that regard.
Again, my suggestion is just get rid of the, upon acceptance of the design proposal and put something else in there. But, you know, I don't think you want a developer coming in thinking they, okay, they invest a bunch of, they selected, they invest a bunch of time, they do their design proposal, they get ownership of the property. I don't think that's what you want as the expectation going into this process. So I would just strike that from here. A couple of other comments, trying to be quick on this. Other than some words upfront, there's really not about what Rockport's involvement is. It's, I forget the exact words upfront in this, but talks about, you know, we want Rockport really wants to be involved. But what does that really mean? Maybe that's a process question. So you've got this committee that reviews these things, but are you envisioning some, and I remember at the workshop, some discussion about maybe some sort of joint project, you know, it's not obvious what that means here, and maybe that needs to be spelled out. And then also in the evaluation criteria, you know, you've got a whole bunch of good stuff here, but I'd ask the folks to tell, to tell us how, what they're going to do is going to benefit Rockport. I mean, you know, it could be, they'd come in and say, hey, you know, we're going to have a, expect to have an increase your assessment base by $5.3 million, so that will so much protect per year. You know, what other benefits are they going to provide? Just, you know, in terms of their general feeling for things, that may be more part of a design proposal, but to the extent that you're looking at, the committee, this to-be-formed committee is going to be looking at what's the difference, you know, not just who these people are, but what are they talking about doing? You might want to have something like that in. And final one, this segues into what Bill said and some other comments. So you want somebody to come in and do something for free, good. What's the commitment to it? Did they wind up with an exclusive, oh, what's the term you use? Do they have an option essentially exclusive on the property for some length of time? You know, I'm assuming they're going to want something. So on one hand, from the developer's standpoint, you don't want the idea that you can come in, make a wonderful proposal, and then somebody else comes and says, you know, I can do exactly what they proposed, but I can do it a little bit better, a little bit cheaper, why don't you go with me as the ultimate one for the property? So the person you enter into this agreement with, at some point, is going to want some assurance that they will be, have a good probability of getting something for their investment. On the other hand, I don't think you want to give them a locked up for a long length of time. You're looking a little bit puzzled, so I don't know if you understand what I'm saying, but it's.
No, I'm only puzzled, David, because all this is, as I said before, is basically an enhanced CV. They're telling us about all the projects they've done before, what their capabilities are. And then all this stuff, this is just the beginning of this project. All this stuff winds up going to town votes, select board vote, discussions, public hearings, contract development. So all of this is kind of the cart before the horse. This is just saying, hey, anybody out there interested in at least having some discussions?
My reason for my last one is to get somebody interested. You need to give them an incentive to be interested. And so then what is, no, I, that's what I'm getting at. What is the incentive? Is it just, you know, if you are looking to build a house, at some point, a builder says, build will come and talk to you and nice, you know, and tell you all about how wonderful a builder they are, but then if you start saying, hey, can you work up some estimates or something, or, you know, you want more detail in planning, they may say, hey, I want some sort of commitment from you, you know, it's an obvious one with real estate agents.
We're not.
I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, no, I get it, but we're not inventing the wheel here. We relied on our planner. This is the process that is pretty typical to be followed, and we're not doing something new and unique here.
Okay, so typically, in these sorts of requests, there's nothing in there about what the terms would be for how long.
We're not at a point to establish terms. We had, we had spoken at length about, you know, what would need to be put into the contract to protect the town interest. And, you know, we talked about clawback provisions if they don't do what they say they're going to do. But that's something that, once we agree to the, the concept, the project, it gets approved, a contract would have to get.
By voters.
Yeah, by the voter. Contract has to get written up, we have to get our attorney involved, you know, to, you know, again, to make sure everything's spelled out, everybody does what they're supposed to do, and, and there's protections for the town. But that's further down the end.
I think we're talking past each other at this point.
We're talking the same thing.
Yeah, we're talking past each other, so, that's different things, so that's fine.
Thank you, David. We have a motion in a second.
We have another comment next.
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm Janet Hall. My husband and I live next door to RES, or where RES used to be. I have a question here on the RES Development Committee. And what, who makes it up? What was the criteria that picked the people that were going to be on this?
Well, we haven't picked the people yet, we've actually just got positions.
No, what was the criteria? You've said that you're going to have two select board members at parks or recreation, three citizens with finance backing, real estate and/or economic development. I'm not naive. I live next door to an undeveloped piece of property. I know it's going to be developed, or something's going to happen to it. Have you thought about putting someone from the neighborhood on this committee? It's our neighborhood, we live there. You, for a citizen to be on it, you have to meet one of these qualifications. I'm asking you if you have considered putting someone from the hood on the committee? It's going to be developed.
So that's why we're talking about it tonight?
Yeah, actually, I mean, just as a point of order, we're on the first motion, which is the, which is the RFQ.
I understand.
And then we're going to get to the makeup of the committee in the second motion, so.
I did not, this is my.
But that's, but that's okay, well.
I didn't know if this was my only chance. I'm just saying.
It's not, but it's okay, Janet, because, because.
You've gone back and forth on what you're going to do, and I know you're going to vote on both of these. And what I'm asking you to do is to consider putting someone from the neighborhood on it.
Okay.
You know, because we care.
Sure.
I mean, we care a lot. We're here.
Sure. So all I'm saying is, thanks for that comment, we're going to get back to it, but let us go ahead and vote on the RFQ first.
And I'll come back for the development portion of it.
Yes, yes. We'll be, we'll be there in just two minutes, okay?
I think we have a volunteer, though.
I think we do too, I think we do too. But let's not get into that discussion yet. So, so going back to the motion that's on the table, do we have any other discussion?
It was moved, seconded, discussed.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Okay, none opposed. Okay, so five zero. Again, this was just approving the RFQ. Okay, now, moving into the very good question on the table, on the composition of the RES Development Committee. Does anybody want to make a motion, just so we can start discussing it? Or do you want?
Or we could modify, pretty quickly, the Redevelopment Committee proposal to include four citizens and add a fourth group, neighbor.
Yeah, or just put one neighbor.
Or we could just put one neighborhood member.
Just start out.
Okay, with three.
Well, okay, so her question was, how did we come up with this list? And, you know, the optimal size for a committee, depending on who you talk to, is going to be between six to eight, six to nine people. If you have more than that, it starts to get a little bit unmanageable. Now, the first three people that are on here are all ex officio, so they don't really count. But you add these up, if you have the two select board, parks and beautification, that's three, recreation would be four, three citizens would be seven. So now with the neighbor, it'd be eight. You know, do you want?
With two, it would be not.
I don't care if we only have one neighbor. I don't care which neighbor it is. I just think that someone from the neighborhood should, should be there.
You know, I think you're right. I think that's an oversight on our part, and I think.
And I don't know if I'm allowed to discuss it or not. The citizen, the three citizens with finance backing, real estate and economic development background, is there a criteria that they can't, that they have to be impartial, that they can't be part of the financing, part of the development, part of the?
Yeah, they can't have a conflict of interest and have any perceived gain as a result of participation.
State law and our bylaws.
Then I'm all done, I'm going to shuffle back to my seat, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick comment, your three, I knew you were doing the first motion, so I had to refrain. The three citizens, I agree, it makes sense to have people, to have those contribute some finance, development, et cetera. I just question whether all three of them, each individually, should have to have that level of knowledge in those fields, or out of the three, you get that knowledge, so.
Yeah, that was the intention, that you would get.
My, my reading of the way it's, the words used, and I'm not a lawyer, but I've been accused sometimes of maybe going further than lawyers parsing out words, it sounds like each individual one, so.
The and/or covers that part.
Right, it's got and/or for that reason.
Yeah, but it sounds like, okay, so to be on it, you got to be the finance or development, but, okay, fine.
That wasn't the intent.
If it's the intent, it's captured in the discussion.
If, if we're going to be consulting with, with any of the neighbors, we have Janet, and we also have Dana Starr, a former board member, who lives and abuts the majority of the property. Would this be an opportune time to see if either of those wanted to be on that committee? Or should we go? Or should we go further out? Well, I think we ought to approve the committee, and then I think we ought to have an application process, and the same way we do for any other committee.
The, and the makeup that has both parks and beautification committee member, and also recreation committee member, you want to just, somebody quickly go through the decision-making process there?
Well, you know, again, we were just thinking how to populate the committee, a large part of this proc, of this project includes a lot of green space and public space, and so it would almost be a park, and so we thought, well, that might make sense, and again, there'd be recreation opportunities there for children and.
Adults.
And adults, too, right? And so that sort of came up there, but I don't think we're wedded to these, this membership, and again, that's why we're having this discussion right now, because, you know, there's good ideas that are coming up, but I, I don't feel strongly about those, it's just that they seem to make sense when we were talking about it.
What do we need to do?
Any other discussion? Okay, well, if somebody wants to make a motion with respect to the establishment of the committee, that would be in order.
I'll give it a try. I moved the board approve the creation of the RES redevelopment committee with the recommended composition of members amended to include at least one neighborhood member. Or, I'm sorry, let me say, one neighborhood member, okay? That would be a total of eight, voting members on the committee?
Uh huh.
Yep.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, five zero. Thank you, Janet, for raising that, very good suggestion, and we will go through the application process, as we said, so we hope to see applications from.
Can you explain to me the application process? How would, how would you go about applying beyond that?
You'll see the request on the website, and there's application forms on the website that you can download and print, or you can go into the town office, get an application for a committee.
Thank you very much.
And it would be the RES Development Committee.
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment Committee, right, that you put on the form.
Yep.
Okay, anything else there? All right, so, there is nothing on wastewater commissioners at this meeting, do we have liaison reports? Bill, thanks, I think, I think we're, thank you, I don't, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liaison reports, Doug, do you have anybody, anything to report on?
Yeah, just to organize my thoughts, so start with someone else.
Okay, Denise, do you have anything to report on?
I don't.
Okay, Jeff.
Nothing by exception, we've had one harbor committee meeting, the notes have been pulled together, and the, this group will see it.
Mark?
Meeting coming up Wednesday with conservation, but nothing now.
And I'll just say that on the wastewater, our wastewater, sorry, the transfer station, we were supposed to have an annual meeting a couple weeks ago, the last Wednesday, I think, of July, but it was postponed because there was a lack of a quorum, it was supposed to be the annual meeting, election of officers, and, you know, regular board meeting. I'm not sure exactly what the plan is, if that's being, if the annual meeting is being postponed till the end of August, as a result, we haven't heard, but Baridi, and I'm not going to be able to say his last name correctly, so I'm not even going to try, Baridi, starts with an N, is the individual that we have chosen as our new facility manager, and of course, that's been reported in the papers, he's supposed to be starting with us toward the end of August, and so I expect that, you know, he'll be at that annual meeting, first meeting, end of August, so we look forward to making future progress on the transfer station. Doug?
Okay, Par, oh, no, you go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to mention with the zoning board of appeals, that we have scheduled the hearing on the challenge to the library building permit for September 11th, and that's on the town calendar. Sorry, Doug?
Parks and beautification committee, that's really revving up, as you saw, with Hunani and the interest in that, that group, so I think they're going to do good things. Investment committee meets on Thursday for its quarter, or its annual review of our harbor banking and trust portfolio, but we're also going to, I believe, develop some recommendations to the select board regarding use of the Wyden Trust for health, healthcare purposes, so you'll have that to look forward to in September, I believe. Planning committee, I did not make their last, their last meeting, so I can't do that. And an update on the library, everything's coming along on schedule, they had the pouring of the first three walls today, concrete work is expected to be finished by the middle of September, and then in October, they'll start working on the first floor. By the end of October, we should start to see the sticks going up the walls, the wooden walls, and they expect to have trusses in the roof on by Christmas. So, so far, things are going well with no problems, not on wood.
Okay, is that it? Then we need a motion to enter into.
Move we enter executive, executive session for a discussion of contracts connected with the use of real or personal property pursuant to one MRSA section 405.6c.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Okay.